I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, can you please take the roll? Mayor Kenny? Here. Councilmember Cody?
Here.
Councilmember Harple?
Here.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Here.
Mayor Phil Tomsary?
Here.
Councilmember Woodland?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
I have seen the deer at increasing numbers. Every year, we seem to have more and more and more deer. I hear that there are 50, 60, 70 deer in town. Well, at the golf course across the street from us, a number of times for the last three years, I have counted over 50 deer, just what I can see from my window. So unless all of the deer heard about the party and they came to the golf course, then there are a lot more deer out there. Last winter, we had a hard winter with a lot of snow. In my backyard, I had at least a dozen deer. In addition to that, we've seen deer starving. They're the worst that I have ever seen them. It seems that the more deer we have, the worse shape they're in. Last year, there were several deer that were just barely, they could barely walk. I think letting the deer multiply and run around and starving to death is inhumane and cruel. So I support reducing the population, but in addition to that, the city, I don't know, should be the police department or the DNR need to enforce the no-feeding ordinance and laws that are in the books. There are people in town who just keep feeding the deer, especially in the summer, so the deer get used to having food, and then in the winter, when these people go away, they starve. I had people across the street at the golf course this last week who were picking up deer, I mean pears and apples. I asked them what they're going to do with them. They say, "Oh, we feed the deer in our backyard," on Spruce Street specifically. So in addition to reducing the population this year, we should enforce the no-feeding rules we have in the books and understanding that the reduction, the population of the deer is not one-time thing. It has to be done every few years. So I encourage you, I urge you to continue with your plan to reduce the deer population. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to comment tonight's agenda?
My name is Norman Reddoo. I live on 804 Tammerack, and I've got the runway between my house and my garage, and I'm one of them. The deer hit my car, cost me eleven, eleven some thousand dollars, smashed in front of my car. Couldn't even pull in my driveway, and the deer ran into my car. I have six, seven, eight, nine deer out there. In fact, leaving tonight, there was seven of them went across the road from our house. Last winter, we looked out the window, and here comes 30 deer down Tammerack because they couldn't get over the snow banks and stuff, so they used the driveways, then people's house driveways and stuff, so I'm ready for, they get rid of them.
Does anyone else like to comment tonight's agenda? Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval minutes, approval payroll, monthly bills, notification regarding next work session, consideration to annual booze, brews, and brats events. At this time, council can take action to approve consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion that council take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll say it.
The motion by councilmember Harple, support by councilmember Goodsky to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any questions?
Booze, brews, and brats is this weekend?
Yes.
Random, and we're now just getting the request for permission?
That's correct.
Okay. Please make note, you need them, Mom.
I'm sure.
Not you.
Any other comments? Can you please take the roll? Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Harple?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Phil Tomsary?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodland?
Yes.
Councilmember Dustin?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none, new business. Presentation by Anderson Tachman and finance director Adbradford on the June 30th, 2013 audit.
Mayor Kenny, members of council, I'd like to let Ken Talzma, the principal with Anderson Tachman, he's going to speak a little bit about the audit and some of the financial, your financial statements, and then I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on just some of the key areas after he's done.
Go ahead. First, I'd like to thank you for having here to present the 2014 audit. As you know, the state of Michigan requires that all cities, counties, village, township is supposed to have an audit done annually of all their finances to make sure that all of the assets that's in action, liabilities, bond balances, expenditures are supported by evidential matter to prove that their books are accurate and agree outside your party information. We did that this year. It's also in accordance with government audit standards, which are more strict, was kind of tied into the State Department of Treasury, requiring a lot of policies and procedures to be followed and used by cities and other governments to make sure that everybody's having the right kind of general controls, that systems are placed to safeguard your assets, and make sure your records are integrating information correctly and pulling everything together in the right places and completely as well. This year, the opinion that you received and that you go to the audit report itself, it's on the second page of the letter in the actual audit report. There's four types of opinions. There is an adverse opinion, which means, say, we go through all of our work and say with cash, if you say you have 10 million in cash, we get the information back, we send letters to the banks and investment companies to confirm what cash you have at the end of each year. Say if the information doesn't agree significantly different, we have an adverse opinion because the books aren't supported by evidence. So that's one type of opinion, probably. Of course, there's a disclaimer where there isn't information to support the financial amounts in your statements, which is also pretty bad, but that may be from effect of maybe a fire or damage or something else that just the information's not available. Then there's qualified, which pretty much means everything's fine except for maybe one item or a couple items aren't up to snuff. Like maybe your fixed asset records aren't as in good shape or available to support the fixed assets in buildings and land of the city, but everything else will be fine. And then there's the last type, which is unqualified, which means everything is fine and accurate as far as accounting principles and as far as the presentation of your books. And after the city announced, you receive this year as unqualified, which in other words, is also the best opinion possible. In the past, you've had a single audit, I think last year you had one, because you exceeded over half a million in federal grants. This year, you fell below under that, weren't required to have a single audit. But we still do also, you have an audit audit standards, which is a bit stricter as far as what they require auditors to do a test and make sure that flaws and a lot of procedural things are done, so that came out pretty good. From working with the city, the first time we thought of what you guys do is pretty much what I have about the state of Michigan, once done, all the documents are performed and all the control are there, as we'd like to see in most cities, so pretty good audit. The next thing I'd like to go back to is we brought some graphs, to control the finances this year. I've got some hard copies too, if any of the council would like, like what hard copy two or... Instead of talking about the names, we're trying to just go on to some of the graphs and see the highlights, it's a lot more useful. First one is pie graph of all the assets and all the stuff in the city, showing the largest thing is the capital assets in the city, it's all the land, infrastructure, buildings, equipment utilized by the city to provide services, which is about 75% of your assets, according to 1 million. Next is cash and equivalents that aren't restricted, 1.7 million. Cash is restricted, about 420,000, and restricted for things like bond covenants or people making nations of things that you restrict for a particular thing, so that's usually what the lease restrictions. There's investments restricted, which a lot of the corpus of your gas and oil fund is restricted. The investments earn restricted is 488,000. Your receivables, which are like from customers from water sewer funds, as well as other services of the city, you have 25,000. You have due from government units, which is due from like the state of Michigan for revenue sharing, due from other governments, 200,000. Then you can have prepaid items, which are things of prepaid insurance that can benefit into next year, so it's not expense that's carried over and written off as it's actually used. And then you also have inventory of materials like fuel at Marina, those things. The next graph is now your liabilities or things that show other people can see. The biggest piece of that pie graph is the bonds payable, is about 18 million, which are things for like water and sewer infrastructure, other capital, things with buildings. You have notes payable, it's multiple debt of 225,000. Leases on equipment, 232,000. You have a liability, which is your retiree healthcare liability, and this is only the portion of the premiums that's not paid at the end of the year, 101,000. You have county offices with a sick and vacation, both 39,000. Payable to vendors, 118,000, through liabilities like crew wages, payroll liabilities, 7, 8,000. Due to others, you have security deposit, deposits for being water sewer customers, accrued interest on the debt, 144,000, some underrend revenue, and installment loans of 1.69, which are also like datacom equipment, usually used for the power of works on the large sewer. The third piece of the balance sheet is the net position or the equity or network. A large piece of it is the investment capital assets, which is the amount of your capital assets that's free to their debt, that's about 64%. Then you have restricted equity of about 8 by 3 million, restricted for particular things, like the corpus of the gas and oil funds is restricted for capital type things. Then you have unrestricted of about 4.6 million, which is going to be used for the day-to-day operations of the city. Next is a two-year comparison of the revenue for all the government funds. You know, the general fund, the big operating fund of the city, you have the special funds on the streets, you have debt service funds, the capital and profit funds. And first looking at the revenue of the last two years, taxes has dipped down a little bit from both 3 million and 475 to both 3 million and 423, mostly because of the tax values declining from the last year. The license permits seem pretty even between both years. Federal sources went down again. We didn't have a single audit this year because you didn't have as much federal money last year, about 522,000, this year 116,000. I think some of the big initiatives you had last year were an EPA grant and a large CBG grant that didn't continue on this year. Your state sources were down a little bit, I think we had some more brownfield money last year, 220,000 more than we didn't have again for 2014, so that led to that decrease. Local revenues, this year we had some, last year we didn't. An example is a little, you get money from the tribe, you get money from the different upper government units, like the county and the townships for particular things, that's a local source. Recharged services, the fees charged by the departments, like the charge department, police department. Refunds and reimbursements, we had 212,000 last year, and this year I actually moved them into the interest and rents. And interest and rents went up from last year. A lot of that ties into the oil and gas fund. We got quite a bit of an increase in the fund out of the gas and oil fund because of a lot of market gains and earnings earnings this year, it's likely to have increased. And then other revenue, from 379 to 280,000. The biggest piece of your other revenue is reimbursement for the housing commission as well as the downtown development authority for paying their debt. Next, the expenditures of the government funds. This year, we broke up the board, which is legislative. Last year, I believe was in general governance. General governance was 1.3 million, last year now it's 4 million. We actually saw a lot of the functions of general governance have a decrease in spending. I think the largest was the attorney function, down about 18 grand, but each party, even the treasurer, clerk, building grounds, everything seemed to be down across the board for spending in general governance. Public safety was 1.7 million, about 2 million. I think we had a little bit more spent with police and fire, both this year. Public works was down from 2.5 million to 1.9. We had, again, with a single audit last year, you had some grants that were under the function of public works, like stuff done for the brownfield and for the public works stuff. Rucking culture is pretty even, 40,000. Other expenditures were up a little bit. Analytics, things like your appropriations, outpieces for insurance and such. Capital olday went down, that's purchasing of equipment, different kinds of things like building, went down from 668,000 to 352,000. And debt service, that's just the principal interest on your debt, is pretty comparable in both years. Next is the revenues of the water and sewer funds. We saw the revenues go from 2.7 to 3.3, partly because of an increase in flow this year. Refunds and reimbursements, 43,000 last year, 3,000 this year. Other revenue, 36,105. Interest and rents, or interest earning on deposits, was about 473,000. State grants went down, we had some grants going on in '13, I worked, continued on in '14, causing that decrease. And bond and interest, revenue is the last thing. Last year, one of the new gasbies changed how the, some of the bond costs are carried on the balance sheet. Before this new gasbee, they used to be allowed to be put on the balance sheet kind of as an asset and then allocated over the life of the bonds and written off that way. The new gasbee required that those costs be written off and not carried anymore, so that's why we had that bump of 35,000 last year and nothing again this year because it's kind of one-time thing. Then we have the expenses of the water sewer fund, just one year showing what's spent on the personal services, the contract services, insurance, administration costs, back of the city, equipment rental, suppliers, utilities, paramedics. The biggest, one of the biggest items is depreciation on the system of the latent capital assets of 1.1 million dollars. Then this means expenses and an interest on the debt. This graph is on the general fund, looking at this fund balance over the last five years. The general fund's the biggest operating fund of the city, and kind of catches most of the, or operational parts of the city. Between '13 and '14, we had a little bit of a decrease in fund balance, went from 1.1 million to 1, to 1,087. I think you're still at about 18, 19% of your next year's budgeted expenditures and transfers, so you're still in a pretty safe place. Finance officers association always uses around, at least be around 15% to be in a safe place with your fund balance, so that you've got kind of a push-in in case of, you know, there's cuts in funding, like people in the past decades have been scared of revenue sharing, other types of grant funding, you know, they've got there. Kind of gives you a little bit of leeway in case something changes or you have additional unforeseen expenses, so you have some money in the bank to deal with things and then get by without having to pay two huge cuts or try to get additional financing or anything. So it's a good thing to have a good level of fund balance, and I think you're there with the 1,087,000 stuff. Any questions on any of the graphs or anything with the audit?
That's done, I don't see any last. Thank you very much.
And wrapping it up, the cooperation we received from treasurer and clerk and all staffs of the city and all the arms with accident, everybody was very helpful in getting us everything we asked for and pulling everything. We look at a lot of invoices, a lot of receipts, a lot of backups and such other things, and it's a big endeavor, and we appreciate that they are happy to help us and we're quite comfortable and fast in getting everything to us as well, so pretty good audit, and everybody was really proud.
Great, thank you very much. Next, we move on to the consideration of a partial split city manatee. On October 2nd, 2014, the planning commission reviewed and recommends council approval of a request in the city of Manistee to split parcel 51-260-703-09 into four parcels. Parcel A and B meet the requirements of the R-1 low-density residential zoning district. Parcel C and D are part of the Monroe Street right-of-way. Is there a motion to take action to approve the parcel split?
I'll make a motion that council take action to approve a parcel split, request from the city of Manistee, that would split parcel number 51-260-703-09 into four parcels as shown on a survey prepared by the Spicer Group.
I'll say it.
The motion by councilmember Harple, support by councilmember Goodsky to approve the parcel split request. I was trying to read through all that documentation. Can I just have a brief overview of why?
While we're doing this?
Yes.
Good question. Several, probably a little over a month, maybe two months ago, we were approached by an individual that owns the last remaining parcel of property, my Manmade Lake, that used to be owned by Mr. Dan Stepanuski. Mr. Stepanuski and I had multiple conversations, he had multiple conversations with John Rose as well as Sam Product Corporation, who attempted to buy his property. Unfortunately, Mr. Stepanuski has passed away over the last several years, and that property was bequeathed to his nephew, Dave Ledwoodson, Ledwoodson, former, grew up in Manistee. He approached us with the concept of, hey, I recognize how important Manmade Lake is to the greater Manistee area, it's the only parcel left, it's debatable whether or not that really is a viable parcel, the cost to bring utilities in would be pretty extreme of the, both sewer and water. Mr. Ledwoodson has asked that we look at the potential trading of property between a viable lot, which he would like to build a home in Manistee, a retirement home in Manistee, kind of coming home concept. So we looked at several different parcels that the city of Manistee owned, and one of the parcels that we own are two parcels on, that you have in front of you. The reason it's in front of you tonight is because part of the Monroe Street right-of-way is currently attached to those individual parcels, and that needs to be vacated before we can have any meaningful conversation. So tonight, all we're really doing is asking council to look at vacating the Monroe Street right-of-way, so we could possibly get some appraisals, look at some comparative swaps potentially, and continue to have conversations to obtain that last parcel of property on Manmade Lake, and sell that property up in perpetuity for many future generations of Manistee visitors and residents alike. So that's why it's in front of you. Ultimately, council will have all the final decisions on that. One of the issues that I had is we have two lots, which are pretty nice, developable lots, that hopefully we can at least market, sell, trade, and in this situation, potentially market and sell with the overall goal of having those developed, increasing the tax base in the city of Manistee. Tonight is just really the first step of vacating the Monroe Street right-of-way.
Which needs to be done anyways if we were going to consider to sell those or develop those from a city's perspective, right?
That is correct.
That's not saying we're going to do a swap, we're just, this is the first step in...
It's all part of the conversations and discussions, but ultimately, only council can make that decision.
Any other questions? Senator King, please take the roll. Councilmember Harple?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodland?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Dustin?
Yes.
Mayor Phil Tomsary?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of authorizing deer herd call by Manistee Police Department. The Manistee Police Department has applied for Michigan Department of Natural Resources permit to reduce the number of nuisance deer in the city of Manistee by up to 50 deer. The deer call will take place over a span of one month, from January 5th through February 5th, 2015. Is there a motion to take action to authorize the deer call?
Yes, I'll make a motion that council take action to authorize the Manistee Police Department under the direction of Chief David Bachman to harvest as many as 50 deer within the city according to provision of the Michigan Department of Natural Resources' issued permit.
The motion by councilmember Harple, support by councilmember Woodland, to approve the authorization of the deer call. Is there any discussion on this?
Sure. Just Mr. Crock made some assumptions that person that shot the deer in the city was not arrested. He was arrested, he was prosecuted for what he did. The second issue, I will not recuse myself unless the city attorney makes the determination that I should recuse myself.
I guess I just, I'll just go ahead.
Do you want to respond?
Yes.
Better, Mayor?
Yes.
There's no basis to recuse yourself in this circumstance, councilmember Harple, in more than it would be your responsibility to recuse yourself if the sewer line next to your property sprung a leak, you would not be prohibited from voting to fix the sewer line. It's the same, very similar condition.
Yeah, I think we've heard a lot of positions from our residents supporting the deer call and those who are opposed of it. Again, it comes down for me, a decision of, is this a responsibility of the city, is this really a safety issue? As pointed out, it was reported that we've had car deer accidents, and when I went back, Chief Bachman provided us with that information, and of course, that number goes over five years, and if you look at when they happened, in the last two years, those accidents have been decreasing. Looking at, I think earlier stated about Lyme disease, I know many people are concerned about that. I really don't believe that by calling the deer, it's going to eliminate the problem. And again, my position, I don't want to put the city in a position, a potential position for liability for nuisance.
You know my position. Any other?
My position, if we're not, if we're not called here, we have to go ahead and say this, feeding the deer in this city, because I'm just coming in, I'm just...
See, that's almost an impossible strategy. I mean, if you have an apple tree in your backyard, if you're feeding the birds in your backyard, if you're...
If you're involuntarily feeding, it doesn't count, but voluntarily putting buckets of corn out, that's feeding.
That's basically what they're doing.
And then, so then we're going to ask the police to go out and police that? That's another pretty tall order, in somebody's backyard.
It's an ordinance violation.
I get that, it's just, it's going to be a difficult to enforce as well, so, yeah. I agree, I mean, it's a, they're coming where the food is, there's no question.
Well, I had one, I had one person tell me I should cut my apple tree down. You think I'm going to cut my apple tree down for the deer?
Who not? It's been there for a long time.
Yes. You know, 30 years ago when I moved in where I'm at now, never saw a deer. Never saw one deer. And within the last probably seven, eight to 10 years is when they really started to multiply. I've had four sets of twins in my backyard with probably eight or nine does in the last, you know, this past year. So next year, what are we going to have? Another four or five sets of fawns. So... I know it's an emotional issue with some people, but it's also an emotional issue with the people that would like to see the deer called.
So I'd like to take the motion out of it and really look at what is responsibility to the city and what are the pros and cons as far as the liability and responsibility.
Marquette just harvested on press field. They harvested deer, then they passed an ordinance to restrict feeding of any deer. And they've kind of taken care of the issue up there. You know, we're not the first city in the state of Michigan that has called herds. There's lots and lots of cities that have done it.
And there are other options I think we can try first before resorting to calling the deer that we've not tried.
DNR won't do it, even though they belong to the state of Michigan. We've asked them to dart them and transplant them into the woods and they won't do it.
I think that speaks a lot, though, from my perspective. And I respect Chief Bachman's opinion significantly in the area of public health and safety. He's done his due diligence and he stated on several occasions, he doesn't feel it's a public safety or health hazard for residents of the city. And it goes back to what the mayor is saying. Is it our responsibility to remove them if it's a significant nuisance? And I struggle with that. And I agree with you in the sense that I don't believe it's the responsibility of the city to remove them. But I see it as being a significant nuisance for our residents, but...
Over the past weekend, I had two occurrences. Friday night, I was at a friend's house, came out, get in my car, and there were two deer walking down the sidewalk at 11 o'clock that night. Next day, going down Vine Street on Lynx, two deer walking right in the middle of Vine Street. So that in itself is a safety hazard.
I just hit a deer two nights ago with my Jeep. $5,000 on the day I was down there. Deer are everywhere. It was right on the edge of the city limits, just beyond the city limits. So they're going to come back. There's food here. I don't know if the call is going to answer the question. And I don't know, and I don't feel that applying the city resources and tax dollars to do it is the right approach in my opinion.
I agree with Councilmember Gustin's comments on that.
If council chooses to perform the call, I think they should look at this as a multiple year scenario. I don't believe that's any one-year scenario. The other communities that I've spoken to have indicated this is not a one-year scenario. So it's a commitment. If we're going to do this, and council will make that decision, I think you should honestly look at it from a multiple-year scenario. It's going to take multiple years to remove, to maybe get the numbers down. So I don't want you to think that, again, pack away, Councilmember Gustin, this isn't a one-year fix.
I don't believe any of us feel that it is.
What would be one-year strategy? And then every year there moving forward, we would have to do another call, another call, and another vote, and another public comment.
Every other, every third year.
But we also need to consider educating the public in the cruelty of feeding wild animals. Because if that source of food is removed, they starve. And starvation is a much more painful way of dying than being shot with a bow or an arrow and killed outright.
I'm just indicating that it's not a one-year scenario.
I understand that. But it also takes education.
And that's where I think we need to start first before we start.
We have talked about this for five years, educating the public, and it hasn't helped.
Have you done it?
What?
Have we done it?
Have you done what?
Have we done education?
Well, I think we've talked about it here a number of times.
We've talked about it, but didn't we actually...
How are you going to educate the public, you know, if you don't say?
So we haven't educated the public and stuff like that. And that's, I believe, should be our first.
You know, with all due respect, we did have 65 car deer accidents in five years, and I think that's too many within the city, even though we haven't had that many in the last year. Plus 45 other incidents of deer where they had to be put to death.
And we're not going to eliminate that.
But we will if we call it.
I am. Let's call it 100%. So I think we're putting ourselves at liability for something that's not going to cure the problem.
Then every other city in the state has put themselves in liability.
Yes, they have. And as was pointed out earlier, we approved an additional officer for their safety. And now we're asking to utilize our time to kill deer.
Oh, okay.
And that I don't approve. Are there any other comments or discussions?
I believe each council will make their own decision on this. It shouldn't be a multiple year. It should be what this council says, this is for this year, with next, I mean, there are going to be elections, other people are going to be up with different viewpoints, and it should be handled at that time. It should be a one-year at a time, not multiple.
And that's what we're proving to...
I understand what's coming back. This is a multiple-year problem. We should keep going. No, let each council figure it out for themselves like we have to. I don't disagree.
No, I totally agree with that.
Any other comments? Can you please take the roll? Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
No.
Mayor Pro Tomsary?
Yes.
Councilmember Horkel?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
No.
Motion approved.
Thank you. State Ray's made a brownfield plan for the South Washington Street area redevelopment project. Earlier this evening, a public hearing was held on the proposed brownfield plan for the South Washington Street area redevelopment project. The City of Manistee Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has approved a brownfield plan for the South Washington Street area. The Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act PA 381 of 1996 requires that the brownfield plans obtain approval from the municipality in which they are located. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the brownfield plan?
I'm making a motion, the council take action to adopt the resolution improvement of the brownfield plan for the South Washington Street area redevelopment project.
So, Tori?
Have a motion by Councilmember regarding state support by Mayor Pro Tomsary to adopt the resolution of the brownfield plan. Is there any discussion?
We thought it would be helpful, Mayor, to go over the plan a little bit for council and the audience.
As we say, has it changed much since you don't last presented?
Just a quick review for the benefit of council and for the public as well. Back in August, the BRA Brownfield Redevelopment Authority approved the brownfield plan. And then that was also endorsed by the DDA. And then at a session of work sessions in the Congress, presented to the city council. Just to go over some of the highlights, there's six parcels in the BRA, proposed BRA plan. Four of them are privately owned, and two of them are city parcels that are contiguous to the brownfield parcels that are privately owned. The reason for the inclusion of those city parcels is to do public infrastructure improvements that are necessary to support the development. Just to kind of go over some of the work that's planning on being done for the public infrastructure, it would be the sanitary sewer line replacement along the riverbank, putting the guts into the pump station on Sixth Avenue. Those are the two biggest pieces of the public infrastructure. We have to run a water main, connect a little water main into that because that building does not have water service or... Stabilize in Short Street, possibly resourcing Memorial Drive, and some streetscapes are primarily about the public infrastructure improvements along that corner. For the private developer, the reimbursable costs have to do with environmental work and site preparation and demolition. There's going to be some removal of contaminated soils, building stabilization, capping of contaminated soils, abatement of asbestos and blood-based paint. This is a very complex plan. The TIF plan for the BRA is just one component of it. They're looking to also get some Nishka rental rehab money to provide some moderate income apartments. They're looking to get some MUDC of life elimination grant money. They're bringing quite a bit of private capital to the table. And then also, they'll be looking at getting some tax abatements down the road in the form of a Possibly Property Rehabilitation Act in a neighborhood enterprise zone. So there's a lot of pieces that have to come together for the developers to make this project work. I don't know if there's any specific questions on that. We went through quite a bit of detail at the work session. The one thing to keep in mind is, this project will only be capturing the incremental increase in values of the property. So the current taxing jurisdictions are getting some money off of it, and the DDA is getting a little bit more money off of it. And then the brownfield TIF would capture the growth beyond that. So the jurisdictions that are getting tax revenue currently would be kind of held harmless. The other thing to keep in mind is, the project probably doesn't happen, so there would be no increase in value unless all these pieces can come together to make their work for the development. So I think that's important to keep in mind. Some people often assume that the project will just happen with the absence of these incentives and the financing tools. And the reality is, most of the time, they don't happen that way.
Does the entire project hinge upon every piece fitting in?
I don't want to speak for the developer, but they've indicated that each of these components is very important to the project. I'm sure there's some flexibility built into their performance, but I think it's critical that all the pieces are there for them to move forward. That's what they're indicating.
The TIF funds that they capture, that'll help pay for the infrastructure that the city paid, that the city...
That's correct. The issue there, and I think it's another point that needs clarifying, is this is a 30-year capture period. Those improvements need to be built upfront. So the city would have to finance those and then would give reimburse those costs.
And that would be almost like the same as a 30-year bond debt, wouldn't it?
Well, it would be, except we don't typically finance these types of improvements. So for instance, St. The Riverbank Sewer, that's one of the projects that will be coming for you, and that we would be proposing to finance with bond funding over a 20-year period. So we would have to adjust with that. Then we would get those reimbursements over time through the TIF capture ban, which would help offset those costs. But they never mesh up perfectly. It just doesn't work that way.
Ultimately, we'll recapture all our costs for a period of time.
Well, the costs that are built into the plan over a period of time is correct. And there's a lot of, it's a 30-year time period, so a lot can happen. You know, we have to build, a developer and the brownfield, they're built assumptions into the TIF capture plan. You know, what is the taxable value going to do over a 30-year period? We had input from the city assess on that sort of thing. But a 30-year projection is a long time to project out. So we were very conservative, but things can change and things can happen over that time period. So this is not a risk-free project for the city nor the developer, but it's based on the best information that we have.
But the sewer, we have to do that. I mean, we talked about that in the last one. But this project also, if it goes forward, will allow the city to have some improvements on that side as well, beyond what we talked about in our last work session.
Absolutely. There's public infrastructure components of the brownfield kind of not included in the bond that was being proposed.
So the collaboration allows us to do much more from an infrastructure and improvements than it would on its own without the development plan, correct?
Correct. The public infrastructure component is bigger actually than the piece of being reimbursed by the developer. But it's all needed to make this project happen.
Any other questions?
Just make sure that, I gather that, Mr. Crock, are you good?
Okay. Thank you very much. Can you please take the roll? Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tomsary?
Yes.
Councilmember Horkel?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Notices, communications, and announcements. A regular part of each council meeting is report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we'll hear from Ms. Krista Johnson, who will report on the activities of the Non-Motorized Transportation Committee.
Good evening. I'm the chair of the Non-Motorized Transportation Committee, and I'm here to present my annual report. This year, I thought I'd talk a little bit about the members that we've had as a core for quite some time and reason for some of the successes that we have. On your far left, you have Todd Miller. And if you've been down town, you've met Todd, you've seen Todd. He's a locally raised gentleman that has an MSU graduate degree in landscape architecture. He works at a farm market that his family has ownership of, and he's smart commute. So he's around and he's doing his best to make sure Manistee retains its natural beauty. Next, you have myself. I've been the chair for, I think, 11 years now. I myself have done 15 Ironmans, four Boston marathons, world championships. I'm a mom, I'm a chiropractor. My emphasis is making Manistee safe for families and healthy. Beside me, you have Ken Blakie Shell, who works at the Manistee Area Public School System. He is our link to both cycling and the schools. He's worked with helping us know what's coming up in these schools, what's the needs for the schools, what programs are available. He's an avid dirt cyclist and sand cyclist, and he's helped bring in aspects and really knows what's coming up in sports. To the far right is Mark Tomaszewski. He's been on the committee just as long as I have, right from the beginning. And he represents the Parks Commission on our board. So he's able to provide that historical reference and that view from the parks so that we work together with them in our future plans. We also had the pleasure of meeting Ed Jones, who's a member that you guys pointed recently. And he's from Kentucky. And his interests are hiking and cycling. And he really wants to try to help work, make Manistee more active in the winter. I also want to thank our other members that attend the meetings are Jeff McCula, who was one of the founding members, and our staff liaison Denise Blake-Sley, who, whose organization keeps us right on top of things. Our regular agenda items for this year have been the Non-Motorized Trail Park, Ham It Up Week, Labor Day Bridgewater, the PAC Awards, Governor's Award, bike racks, implementation of training wheels, trail expansion and connectivity, and city councils strategic planning items. This is what we have regularly discussed at every meeting. The Trail Park is a project that Ken Blakie Shell has headed from the get-go. It's the Trail Park, which is 178 acres out on M-55. And here's just a little picture of a Nike Plus of some of the trails that you could cover in a night. I think that I did that in January this year. We regularly discuss trail maintenance, making sure the facility is top-notch, safe and well-maintained, and signage is up to date and correct. We're working on parking in the entrance. We improved the signage this year. And we're seeing improved use, just a more diverse group of people out there. Snowshoeing is becoming more popular out there. Ken Blakie Shell oversees the grooming. I don't think there's another facility in Michigan that has a park that has free cross-country ski grooming. This is a five-to-six-foot-wide, corduroy path with two-set trails that's groomed several times a week. So it's quite a facility if you guys haven't been out there. This year, we also sponsored our sixth Ham It Up. Ham It Up is our Health Act of Manistee Week, in which you have in your packets a schedule of events starting from May 17, 2014, through the following Saturday, May 24. It always kicks off with the Jazzercise Warm-Up 405K. And this year, we got to participate and provide the course for girls on the run. It then moves on to anything that we can do to help showcase what we have in Manistee. The events are typically free or donation-based, which typically will go towards whatever person is putting on the event. We were able to do the Richard Connectus Junior Walk-In Rule to help keep him in our memory and keep facilities such as that on our agendas. The Labor Day Bridgewater is celebrated its third year, and that's a project that Todd Miller heads up. And what it is, it's a continuation... And what it is, it's a continuation of the Mackinac Bridgewater for Labor Day. We try to mimic the same amount of miles, so there's a five-mile route, but we provide some easy outs if someone wants to shorten the loop. We're fortunate to have two bridges, so we were able to loop around, and we've had a good turnout, and hope to continue that every year. We did apply for the Promoting Active Community again through the Governor's Council on Physical Fitness, and we were excited to get the second consecutive year with gold. With eleven consecutive awards, that makes us the most awarded community in the state of Michigan for promoting active communities. On your packet, you will have an information sheet that kind of shows what's being considered, how we got that gold, and where Manistee ranks in order to get those. We use it as a tool. It's pretty extensive. It's fourteen sections, essay questions, census. It catalogs everything that we've done, the facilities we have, and it helps set us up for more awards. So this year, I'm very happy that I will be presenting you with the gold award again. Just alone, in the last two weeks, we've received a lot of PR for programs like the PAC Award application. I've received calls from the News Advocate. I did an interview with Seven and Four News. Senator Darwin Boers contacted me two times, as well as regular contact with the Governor's Council on Physical Fitness. They're asking what makes us the success, and that's why I wanted to talk about our committee members at the beginning of this presentation. We have a diverse group. You guys have supported everything we've done, and we've had some great successes. This year, they had a special award. They created a Governor's Award, so they selected from the pool of PAC Award applicants. And there were two people, two communities, that received a Promoting Active Community Governor's Award, Novi and Our City. So I had the benefit of getting to go down to Ford Field and accepting that on behalf of the City of Manistee. And in the morning, Mitch was able to go to Lansing and work right with the representatives and talk about what we're doing and what the trends are, and he received an award for that. Next, is a slide I need help with. This should be the video clip that was taken right here in this room, and it was used at the Governor's Award banquet. Try it. I'm Dr. Krista Johnson. I'm the chair of the Non-Motorized Transportation Committee for the City of Manistee. The City of Manistee's Non-Motorized Transportation Committee has committed major efforts to promote active, healthy living within the city and connecting to the surrounding communities. We are small, and we have made great strides.
We've done equipment to improve infrastructure and opportunities for citizens in the area. We've developed a little over four miles of cross-country ski trail that we groom throughout the winter. We also have developed a mountain bike skills park. It's got dirt jumps and a few other things like that. We're developing trails that can be snowshoed, hiked, skied, and also biked during the summer. And we're hoping to link that in with a regional trailways project to make it more accessible for the local community.
We have accessibility with our riverwalk, curb cuts, sidewalk inventory. Everything we've done has a focus of making it available to people of all ages and all abilities.
We have two major events throughout the course of the year, one of which is the Labor Day Bridgewater, which takes advantage of our riverwalk as well as some of the local bridges we have. We also end up having the Healthy Active Manistee Week. It's a week-long series of activities that promote healthy, active living.
The key to success that we've had is that the city supports us greatly. They've recently done the zoning amendments that we need. We have bike paths and bike routes that are on the thought process of all new special use permits and all new construction. And we've had a great committee made up of people with disabilities, people who work with the schools, retirees, myself, a doctor. With that mix, including a Parks Commission member, we're able to really bring in all points of interest to make it a successful committee.
We're the City of Manistee, nominated by the Governor's Council on Physical Fitness for the Promoting Active Communities Award.
Okay. Okay. So part of our success, I think, is that we're always looking, what can we do next? What's going to be for next year? So we're going to continue to look at, how can we improve connectivity to surrounding communities, counties, state? We've also looked at our Blue Ways. It's a great, great thing that we have. We have the Lake Michigan and the rivers. It's, it sounds like a great idea to be able to get in some kayak facilities, take a paddle, go to dinner downtown, go to the beach. We have, we have a great natural ability to try to do that. We're looking at sports of growth. What are people doing? What are they looking at doing with their recreation time? Could it be riding their bikes on the sand? Could it be standing up and paddling something? Always keeping an eye out. What's new? What are, what's the trends? We want to keep in mind training wheels and strategic planning, so it keeps consistent with those, and always looking for new bike racks. The Vogga approached us about a desire and need to have bike racks, so we're trying to find out, how can we fit another one downtown and make it fit into the feel of our historic city? And those are some of the opportunities that we're working on. Okay, I'd like to present with some swag, because I have some awards to give and some stuff from Ham It Up. Okay. So here's your second consecutive gold award, or you just received that, but it's just arrived. And I know I did mention this as soon as we received this, but this is officially yours, the Governor's Award as well. So if you were a participant of Ham It Up, we always like to provide a little active staff for everybody. And I know sometimes I've given these, and sometimes I beg you to come. So don't expect them to be free for next year.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's it? That's all for my presentation tonight. Is there any questions?
I just personally would like to thank you and your committee for all the hard work you've done in the last few years. It's great to see it, and with some of the negative comments we've heard about the city, they should take a look at this and see what progress we've been making for Healthy Manistee. Senator, thank you very much. Thank you.
The M-55 Trail Park is fantastic for cross-country skiing. Enjoy going out there. It's just beautiful. Think of a workout.
It's great, and it's only about ten feet elevation change, which is a contrast to if you haven't been out skiing, or it's a good start.
Thank you very much.
Again, I'd like to reiterate all the comments, and thank you and your committee. Why you've given us these awards, really, you and your team have earned those awards, and we really appreciate you putting such a positive light on the City of Manistee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. So anyone who'd like to comment? Non-motoric officials and staff, Senator.
Just to remind everybody that the tune for today is "The Election Day," so encourage everybody to go and vote. Do you manage?
There was an article in the paper the other day, I'm not sure if it was today or the other day, regarding 12th Street, and asking why we haven't done anything with 12th Street between Oak and Maple Street. We are continuing to work on that particular project. The parcel of property that, where the improvements need is in Father Charter Township, it's owned, fee-simple by the property owners. We've talked about that in the past. This past week, you would have received some information, and the Councilman Whitlam and Councilman Harple probably got it directly. But everyone else should have seen that in their packets about some of the before and after, potential looks of that, of that street. I think it looks great personally. We sent those to the property owners and the intent to continue to work with them on 12th Street. So we continue to work with those individuals. I actually got a letter today from Anna Stuck of 248 Sixth Avenue, a student at Manistee High School, asking us to do something. So I'll be drafting a response to her and copying all the city council. She wrote an excellent letter, and this is the indication of our adults coming on. I was very, very pleased to see her taking the time to write us that letter. And follow-up, Mayor, what we're currently working on in article, and for the Manistee News Advocate, following up on streets. The position of this article is, what is the real cost? We often hear about where are the funds coming from for street maintenance, and I know the state legislature is working on it. The intent of this article is really to get across, what are the true costs for upgrading a local block, a local block in the City of Manistee? What is it for complete rehab? What is it for a heavy rehab? And what is it for a light rehab? And kind of laying out all those different cost impacts. And then we took some of the individual streets that are very familiar to a lot of individuals, possibly the Third Street by the courthouse, some of those streets that are in really dire shape, and with our engineer of record who have done some actual estimates on those streets based on the length and the width of the road and the base conditions, we've actually put some dollar amounts to that. So really, kind of, the intent there is to bring it home as to, what is the true cost for some of the streets? We'll be following up that with an ad hoc street committee we're trying to schedule right now, and we'll continue to try and educate the public on how we move forward with the streets in the near future. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Nothing to thank Madam Mayor. It's always a pleasure to be here, however.
Finance Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public Safety Director?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
DPW?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City Engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
No? Councilmember Cody?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Harple?
The only thing I have, we were at the conference of the Marquette this past week, and I talked to a number of council members from other cities, and Manistee isn't unique on the bad streets. Apparently, every city in the state of Michigan are in the same boat that we're in with streets and how to fix them. That's it.
Mayor Protem Zaring?
And I was in Marquette also, and I have to say, the EOA Board, which I sit on, is going to be looking at ways to do an education program for elected officials. By the way, the EOA Board is the Elected Officials Academy Board, on the very same subject, how to find financing for street funding, because everyone at the table was, that was a big concern.
A question for the City Manager. Do you have any updates on the contract with the steelworkers, the DPW that care
Carefully. Sure, we are, we have, they initially voted on the contract, and there are two specific issues that they're currently working with. One of the issues, I think, is just simply, it's a calculation on how potential raise will be implemented, so I think that's really simple. It's just math. You just have to agree upon the calculation. The second one is involving promotions, and we are currently having conversations with them. I'm hoping that we'll have that resolved this week.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Biskey?
Nothing.
I just want to thank Chief Bachmann and his staff for taking care of the cars in the city. They're doing a wonderful job. Keep it up. Thank you.
And I just want to make one comment. No matter what side of the, your opinion as to any of the decisions that we talk about here, we do appreciate your respectful coming forward and giving us your thoughts and your opinions respectfully. So we do appreciate that. But then I'll take a motion to adjourn. So we'll... [music][1768.83]